Okay, it's recording. We need screaming. We're live.
Where's that?
Okay. I was rushing.
Where's that?
No, I'm going tomorrow. Got all my stuff packed up. I'm gonna rush through all of it. Of course, there were meetings. I got to figure out. You're a grown-up now. As we tell her. Okay, we will call the meeting in order. And our first order of business is from Caprol.
Brian?
Here.
Tyler?
Here.
Kim, Seth, and John?
Here.
And Deb?
Here. And you all have the agenda before you. I entertain an opportunity to approve the agenda.
So moved.
I'll second.
Any further discussions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Public forum, do we have anyone here tonight that would like to speak in public forum? Okay, let's go pretty quick. Administrative reports, the PLC conference presentation. Would you like to start with that?
You're gonna start?
This is not gonna take very long. Are you sure she did?
We like that.
I know you do, Tyler. I was thinking about that.
A whole reminder.
You wanna go to your first slide?
Thank you.
I just wanted to give you just real quick, because I know Deb, I thought, here we are, another PLCs. So what, when we say PLC, what do we mean? Professional learning community is what it stands for, and it's an ongoing process, where, which educators work collaboratively in a reoccurring cycle of collective inquiry and action research to achieve better results for our students. During that work, what are we doing? We're answering four critical questions. What do we want students to learn? How do we know if they learn it? What do we do if they don't learn it? And how, what do we do if they already know it? Those are the four, those are the four questions that we're asking. Now, we might not always ask those four questions during every meeting, but they are being addressed through that process. How long have we been implementing PLCs? Well, I can tell you for quite a long time, it's been in the works. I know Jen and I, and just because I heard Jen's laugh, we actually attended a conference probably 10 years ago, and we sent, Jody, you went, did you go to that conference with us?
I did go, no, I did the AEW. Where are you going?
Yes, that was, I was Carolyn, but there was representative, for example, and Kim, and Kim went with us, and Marcia DeZonia, as two board members, when I went, 10 years ago. And we were not the first group to go, and so during that time, there would be small groups of people that went. Then, two or three years ago, we, no, two years ago, we spent, we sent a big group of people, but we could do that because of TLC funds. When TLC came, we had a bigger, we had a bigger pool of funds to work with. So last year, I think you guys know this, we sent, I think, 22 people. Mr. Beecher was one of those people that went with us. Over the summer, we sent a smaller group of people, of just middle school and high school teachers, along with Mr. Danielson and Mr. Vanderpoel. And then, again, in the fall, we sent another group of 13 of us went. And the lucky thing is, this, the last two years, we may be able to send people to Des Moines. Usually at big conferences like this, we've had to travel, but they were lucky enough that it's been here in Des Moines, where we can, you know, that's a much easier trek than, than having to worry about people staying overnight and all that stuff. Anyway, why are we doing this work? Why? Right there. It's because we want to ensure high levels of learning for all students. It's the right work, it's the right work for kids. And it's, it's, it goes with what we stand for, every student, every day. I just wanted to kind of give you the, this is the 30,000-foot overview as a district. So what is the work that we've done as a district when we think about PLCs? Because we're breaking off into grade-level teams, we've done some vertical work across departments. Common language has been a big part of what we're doing. So if we're talking about kindergarten, and we're talking all the way to 12th grade, what we've been working on is essential learnings. Stacy, would you hold up that black notebook that I have standing there? That is an example right there. That, those are the English Language Arts Standards K-12. So that's just, that's just English standards. So what we've done is, we are looking at, what are the essential learnings that kids, that those need to know, those things that if they leave your grade level or your class, you're gonna be sick to your stomach if they don't know that. So, what does that mean? Does it have, you can see those three questions right there. Does it have endurance? Does it have leverage? Does it develop student readiness for the next level of learning? So, we have, what we do is, we have that insight target. What are those essential learnings? Then around that is, the important to know, and then the other, just like another target, the nice to knows, but you know what? That might not be that essential learning. So the work that teachers have been doing over, for professional development across the district, is working on those essential learnings. So, I just wanted to give you an example. This is exactly the work that we did district-wide on PD, and this came directly from the work of going to the PLC conference two years ago. So what the, what the teachers are doing in grade-level teams is, they are looking at their, at their standards, and they're, they're, they're putting them in a hierarchy of all those standards, what is, what are those essentials? And then they're putting them in student-friendly language, because it's all well and good, but if you look at those, and if, as educators, we're, we're going back and forth on what they exactly mean, what are you as parents thinking, as community members? Do kids really know what we expect of them? No, they need to be in kid-friendly language, so that we all, and when we say kid-friendly, it's really just in language that we all mean, that we all know. I don't mean that, that he's gonna have a different understanding, that we should all know what that means. Then, what are the skills that kids, that students need to have prior to coming into stepping foot into that classroom? When will it be taught? Because if it's an essential learning, and more than one person is teaching that class, you, you need to be teaching that at approximately the same time, so that you can have common assessments and talk about that. I'm not gonna get into all of that, but I just wanted to kind of give you that brief overview of the work that we're doing. Now, what we have is, we have a representative from each of the buildings that have, that went to the, that just went to our PLC conference in October, and they're just gonna give you a brief shareout of some of their takeaways. So we're gonna start with elementary, and Beth Postel.
Well, first of all, I would say, thank you for the opportunity to get to go. It's, it's always fun to go somewhere and just become re-energized, and that certainly is what it did for me. They asked us to kind of come away with like a couple aha's, and I guess one of my biggest aha's, we've been doing PLCs at the elementary school for some time now, and you kind of think of it, I thought of it more as a linear progression, so like you form your groups, you have norms, you figure out what you're gonna do, and you're gonna disagree, and then you just perform. And really, that's not what it is. It's more like a life cycle, and we need to always kind of be coming back and looking at, why is so-and-so in this PLC group? Is that still the best fit for them? Is that, is there possibly another group that might be a better fit for them? And, and just kind of revisiting those norms, and kind of figuring that out over and over and over again, and you're, and you're never done. So that was kind of an aha for me. Another one was, we do a lot to form our intervention groups, and we look at big data, and I feel like we do a fantastic job of, you know, figuring out who didn't get it, and forming those groups based on that. But what if we could go beyond that, and we could start anticipating who's gonna have a hard time with something? And maybe have an intervention group that's not chasing the tail, but is at the same time giving a kid a double dose, so that by the time we are ready to assess, they're there, and so we're not, you know, playing catch-up all the time. And so that was kind of a large aha moment for me. And so I think that we're doing some of that now, as we are doing some double dipping with kids when we're doing foundations. So we've got some kids that, they hear it in the regular classroom, and then we also have them doing like a second dose of that at the same time, so that by the time we're ready to do that assessment, they're ready for it. And I'd like to see us do that in other areas as well. So that was kind of our aha.
Are there any examples of the, I'm curious about the predictive model, or are there districts that are doing that, or are there things in place?
Well, there's certainly, like, if you wanna do like some pre-testing, in our, in the elementary, that's kind of hard for us a lot of times, because it just takes a long to take a test. You hate to give up that instructional time. So what we're doing is, we're able to like, you know who your kiddos are that are struggling with reading and phonics, so we've been able to kind of use our, our formative assessment, which is just our small data, like, they're just like little quick quizzes to like look in, if we know that they're constantly having some difficulties there, 80% or less, then we are putting those kiddos in those groups that are just automatically getting second. As far as like other districts, I don't know. I don't know. Maybe I need another day to go somewhere.
It'd be good to know and find out, you know, is it working?
Yeah, it'd be awesome. It'd be fantastic. Yeah, so.
Any other questions? I'm Jenna Dowling, I teach 5th grade here, and I like best, just appreciate the getaway every once in a while. I think those conferences are just a great chance to pause and reflect a bit on what it is we do, and why we do it, and I grabbed one of the sessions that, that I just came out of the most, and one of the quotes at the beginning was talking about PLCs, and how the focus together as professionals should shift more from teachers' teaching to students' learning. And that was a good, I had, I had forgotten that. And the one thing that I loved about her session, Marianne Nielsen, what's her name? Is, she was talking about how you, not just set up your classroom, and that was part of it, and a lot of, a lot of affirmations, you know, when you're at those, and when you've taught for a while, and you're in a high-performing district, there's a lot of things that you do here that you kind of feel good about, oh yeah, I've heard that, I've done that, we do that, we've, we've stopped doing that because we've done it for so long, and there's something better. But the one thing that caught me was, she was talking about the questioning, and how you question kids, and I don't mean higher-order questions versus just a basic recall, but I mean the kind of engagement that you expect from kids, and that when they walk in the door, I, I expect them all to be learning and engaged and participating. And it was a really good check-in for me on, how often do I do the kind of questions that I just want ones, I just need one student to respond back? Or is it the general, you know, does anyone have any questions? Or does, does that make sense to everyone? I'll find that I'm even nodding sometimes, because I want, I want it to have made sense for them, so we can keep moving. And this was a really great one, because it just talked about design classes, students show up and are required to learn, and talking about 100% forced engagement. And my example for this came very next week, and I'll just throw myself under the bus on this, because I think even after we've taught for a number of years, teachers still do a really good job of just being reflective, and once you know something, you can't unknow it. And I was, I was in front of class, and I was doing a pretty great job. It was a really driver performance, and I looked around, and I saw another student that had come to my session of just kind of sitting there and looking up, and I thought, oh, here we go. And then it hit me of, oh my gosh, the last seven questions, or four questions that I have asked have been those kinds of, so I immediately went back to that conference, and it was really great to have had that professional time to kind of absorb more of that. And it was a quick switch of, you know, instead of asking the questions the way I was, every student had, I switched it to, every student had a whiteboard and a marker, and I was asking them about parachutes and parachute design, and every single one of them could draw me a parachute on the left, and on the left side of your whiteboard, and they all did that. So now 100% of the kids are now engaged in class and doing. And on the right-hand side, you know, draw, draw some kind of change that you're gonna make to your parachute to get it to fall slower. And huh, everybody could do it, versus how I was doing it before. So like I said, you can't unknow things, and now, you know, you just gain something. Every time you go to a conference, and this is one thing that I really appreciated gaining. Any questions?
That's really good.
Where's my white? No.
Hi, I'm Katie Thomas, and I teach 6th grade math. Also, just to reiterate what they said, thank you for allowing us the opportunity to go. I always feel like it's so much work to leave, but then you go, and you're like, oh, I'm so happy that I went to this. You do feel just a renewed sense of, I don't know, pride in what you're doing and excitement. So, one thing that I really took away was, we've been dealing as a singleton school, meaning I'm the only person that teaches 6th grade math. I don't have somebody necessarily to collaborate with and say, let's make a common formative assessment. I don't have that opportunity. So, one of the sessions I went to was about singletons, and how to make that work and what that looks like. And the first thing he said was, well, you're doing it to yourself, stop being a singleton. Teach more areas. Teach 7th grade math, teach 8th grade math. But then he also talked about using a horizontal structure, so rather than going vertically with 7th, 8th grade math, 6th grade math, all coming up with a common formative assessment, working horizontally. So, all the 6th grade teachers coming together to find an essential learning based on a college knowledge skill versus maybe a content area. So this was kind of eye-opening for me, because we had started that process, so our 6th grade team has been working together on text evidence, was our first one that we started with. And since August, I've been frustrated and stressed out, feeling like, where are we going with this? Are we doing it right? And going to the PLC, I felt excited, and a new sense of like, we are on the right track. Gilbert is doing things the correct way. They talked a lot about a common rubric, and I remember being in our PLCs for the last, however many weeks, 10 weeks, 13 weeks, thinking, how is this gonna work across the board? But using the correct language and getting it out to kids and letting them see that rubric has been impactful, and made a difference in their text evidence and their learning. So, we came up with a common rubric, and presented it in each class. So all of our assessments were different, but all structured off the exact same rubric. So I guess in the PLC, it was just confirmation that what we were doing, we were on the right track, and I couldn't figure out then, why am I so frustrated? Why is this so hard? But I think that one of the biggest takeaways I had was that it's a process. I think you said a life cycle. Like, it's not gonna be just, oh, here we go, we're done, there's your four essential learnings for the year, you're good to go. It's gonna be a constant cycle. So maybe this year, we do two college knowledge skills, and we do it really, really well, but then next year, we add in two more. Or, you know, maybe we get four done this year, and next year, we add in another two. So, for me, that was the biggest thing, is I felt really stressed about being a singleton. But now I see that there's a lot of opportunities to change that, or do it another way, and it can still work, and still really have an impact on the kids, the teachers, and our district. So that was really good for me. The last thing I took away that was really big was, I went to a breakout called Heart Print, and it just talked about giving and taking, and being a good collaborative community. And one thing I'm really proud of at Gilbert is that we do, I feel like, collaborate versus just cooperate together in a group. I feel like we are a team when it comes to PLCs, and we really do a good job of communicating and being able to maybe banter back a little bit, like, I don't necessarily agree with this, but here's my thought, how can we fix this, or how can we come to a common idea and make it work? And then what's best for the kids? Like, I might not like that idea, but what's gonna work for these five kids? You know, what's gonna work for our intervention groups? What's gonna work for all of the 6th graders, to make them more productive in 7th grade, and then 8th grade, and so on? So those were my biggest takeaways. It was a really great conference, so. Questions?
I'm intrigued by your, your term singleton school, and I hadn't really thought of it that way, but, so there's opportunity within our, to go vertical, like 7th grade math, 5th grade math, but is there any structure to like peer groups from other districts that didn't have?
If you wanna wait 10 seconds, I'll just...
Okay.
Yeah, they do actually talk about that, about going to different campuses, and like, Sarah Lambors does teach a group of 5th grade students 6th grade math. So her and I have been in communication about me coming to observe her, let's look at these tasks that we both do, how can we make this, how can we come up with a formative assessment together? So trying to think of ways across the board, or things across the board that we do teach to different groups, but maybe not in the same building or whatever, and see how we can come up with common, common formative assessments that way, if that makes sense. So.
Yeah, I mean, just, again, learning from other districts. I know administrators, I know superintendents, you guys, we, so...
And correct me if I'm wrong, but Natalie Wilson, our counselor, is working with...
She's in a PLC that goes with another district.
So they work together collaboratively. So it definitely is an option, it's just a scheduling and planning, and getting together to do it. So, and Mr. Danielson has really encouraged us to not just think horizontally, but now think vertically. Think, you know, outside of the district, think of other ways that you can implement these, and then see which one is the best fit. We just talked about best fit, was that, was that you also, did you talk about best fit?
I have some great aha's.
And they're on top of it. So, just a lot of, a lot of areas to continue growing and becoming better.
So, how many professional communities does an average teacher belong to? Not an average teacher, sorry, our grade teachers. Do you belong to one? Do you belong to multiple? Do you?
They recommended not going more than two.
Not more than two, but you can kind of organize however you want to do it.
So we kind of gotta organize ourselves this year, and then we were encouraged, you know, if you did horizontal for the first semester, try vertical. What happens, what does that look like? That way you've got a good grasp of both, and then you can implement multiple ideas versus just being, oh, I've only done horizontal. Because you really have to try it, and either fly or fall, and either way, you're gonna learn from it. So I think that's, that's the idea, I guess, you know, and it's a, it's a cycle, so we're still learning, but we're, I think we're doing a really great job.
Yeah.
The conferences are working.
Excellent, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, well, this is my name, but Jody Hearn is also here, so that's not just me. Sorry, the train's the bus there. So kind of to piggyback off of what Ms. Thomas said, I also went to the same conference about being a singleton, and I think that my takeaway from that was, yeah, I might be a singleton, but I'm not the only one that teaches Spanish. I'm the only one that teaches Spanish II, but there's Mr. Randy Carroll who teaches Spanish, and there's Mrs. Lacy Moore who also teaches Spanish. So how can I be working with those people to talk about what's going on in my classroom? Because even though I'm the only Spanish II teacher, as you guys probably know, second hour looks way different than third hour, and third hour looks way different than fourth hour. So when I go back and I look at what my kids had done, okay, why did second hour perform at this level, but third hour performed at this level? Talk with my group, let's look at these assessments, what can I do? What are some interventions that I can do with these kids? Because I know that I personally am really good at helping those kids that are struggling. Spanish is really hard for me. I have to work really hard at it. So I know how to help those kids who don't get it. I don't know how to push those kids who already know it, I don't know how to make them better, but Randy does. So now I'm really excited to have those opportunities to be able to talk with him. We also talked about if you're a singleton, if you wanna talk with other people who teach Spanish II, where can you go to find those people? What other schools can you go to? Where online can you go to find other people? So it was really encouraging to me that aha moment of, yeah, I'm a teacher, and I work by myself a lot, and I make, do a lot of my own planning, and I come up with a lot of my own ideas, but I now have an opportunity to work with other people, and to talk to other people, and to collaborate, to figure out what I can do in my room that's best for my kids, to help them be successful. And that was my takeaway moment. Any questions, comments, or some other remarks?
Ooh, challenge.
Oh, God, oh, hello, Mrs. Orno. Mom, lay your sunshine right in with those one other remarks. He's amazing.
Close to the tree.
Close to the tree, went with the bus there, but I just kind of went, oh.
I stepped, I stepped in front.
I'll save you. So I went this summer, so I kind of had the benefit of not having to leave the costume like that three days away, but I was really excited to go. Like, I had been part of a steering committee here at Gilbert that had explored PLCs, taken a grad class with Jenna on PLCs. I think we talked about doing PLCs at Gilbert for a really long time, but we weren't really doing PLCs. Like, it was sort of a, you know, buzzword that we threw around, but like, we weren't truly following, like, what it was intended to be. We worked really hard at the high school to develop a framework, I guess, for collaboration, because in our building, it's just hard, because you don't have, like, even at the middle school, like, they have the natural grade-level alignment. We have teachers that are teaching all different grades, and what group do you put them with? And so we worked really hard to structure collaboration. Now I feel like we have a focus, and it's on student learning. And so that, kind of what Jen said, the shift from just talking about teaching to talking about the learning. And so that was really exciting. So I wanted to go and learn more, also the singleton thing definitely applies at the high school, like Rebecca said, and like Katie was talking about. So the idea, like, we, we certainly talk to the other people in our department, and you know, there's certainly someone to bounce ideas off, or go to when you're struggling, but to have this idea that, okay, we can have common rubrics, and we can have prerequisites, if you will, like, these are skills that I know kids will get in the grade before I have them, so I can build upon them, rather than taking the little time that we have with them and re-teaching those. And so then that's kind of, it's allowing us to scaffold there. So that's really exciting. The other thing that, so I had two big takeaways, that the idea that we do work in isolation so much, and that our students can only benefit from like teachers sharing knowledge about teaching, about learning, about the students, you know, someone might have a best practice that works with one student that I'm not even aware of, but if I adopt that in my classroom, then, hey, like, I can reach them too. So there's that part. And then I guess the other thing that I wanted to say that I really appreciated was, you know, other districts might hear this word PLC, and it might be this mandate that, okay, we're gonna do PLC, it's what we're gonna do, and, and I get to some degree, that's why we were sending people. But I guess the other thing is, like, I feel like our district is, we're doing PLC, we're having professional learning communities, because they benefit students and help them learn, not just because we wanna say we're doing it. Like, so I think we're really doing it with fidelity by sending people to the conferences, and really trying to bring that in. And so it is about the students, and how they're gonna benefit from it. So I just really appreciated that, that it wasn't just kind of going through the motions. So, thank you.
Excellent, thank you.
I just wanna add one thing to what Jody said. I think that when, that how we're, in the last couple years, really trying to build that capacity, because it is important, I mean, wanna, you come away, a lot of teachers can come away from something like that and feel really rejuvenated, but if you don't, if you don't get to experience that, you don't always feel the same, you can't feel the same thing when somebody comes back, and they're like, oh my gosh, it was so great. And you're, you know, you're like, oh, sure it was, you know, I'm here, so, yeah. But, so we are working hard as to, how do we get, like, build that capacity, and getting as, as many people over the next few years to get to these, so that they can have those same experiences that what you just heard. So, thank you for allowing us to do that.
Carrie, if you had to guess, like, what percentage of the teachers or staff have gone through this, what would you say? Like, just ballpark-ish?
I'd say by now, we probably have 50, at least 50%. I'd have to go back through and look for sure, but I think we have about 50% at least.
A lot.
A lot have gone.
A lot of percent.
And we have some people that maybe are new tour staff, but maybe have gone, because they were, had gone at another district, so.
Do you have questions?
Can I have a question for Carrie? The table that you showed, that talks about the essential skills and language that everybody understands, does that get shared with the parents, at least at the early grades?
That is what our goal, that is where our goal is going with that, yes. Because that, that is where, what we, our hope with that is, that would be kind of like what our curriculum maps would turn into, is to this is, this is, this is what our expectation is, this is how we get, that's how, this is our roadmap.
Because I think that would be really critical for the parents, keeping track.
Yes, no, good question. But no, that is exactly what we talked about, and that is our plan, yes. And those are things too, I think that right there, thank you for putting that back up. Sounds kind of silly when I say this, but it really is a living document. It's not just a one-and-done. And we started this work last year, and we came back to it, and we said, okay, now really look, you gotta look at these essential learnings. Do you still believe this? I mean, after having started it last year, do you still believe? And some people said, oh, no, we gotta do some work, we gotta, you're always tweaking that, because there's always refining, like Beth said, you're, it, it's something, it's a cycle, you're always coming back to it. So, but, good question, so yes, ultimately, that is what our goal is.
Thank you, Carrie.
No, thanks.
Okay, Mr. Davis?
Try to get a stand...
is to this is, this is, this is what our expectation is. This is how we get, that's how, this is our roadmap.
Because I think that would be really critical for the parents.
Yes, no.
Keeping track.
Good question. But no, that is exactly what we talked about and that is our plan, yes. And those are things too, I think that right there, thank you for putting that back up. Sounds kind of silly when I say this, but it really is a living document. It's not just a one and done. And we started this work last year and we came back to it and we said, okay. Now really look, you've got to look at these essential learnings. Do you still believe this? I mean, after having started it last year, do you still believe? And some people said, oh, no, we got to do some work. We got, you're always tweaking that because there's always refining. Like Beth said, it's something, it's a cycle. You're always coming back to it. So, but good question. So yes, ultimately, that is what our goal is.
Thank you, Carrie.
No, thanks.
Okay, Mr. Davis.
Try to get a standup if we can in the area. If you want to come here and let these stand here. Got you guys singing? All right. My name is John Davis, a high school ag education instructor and FFA advisor here with Gilbert Schools. We thank you for the chance to share a little bit of our FFA experiences here recently this fall. During the days of October 24th through the 27th, the Gilbert FFA was represented by ten members of the chapter at the national convention in Indianapolis, Indiana. We do have one other representative that I'll share. We do have a state officer that was also there as part of the experience through the state association, not with our organization as well. We had one member that received our, the highest honor that you can receive at the national level, and that's the American FFA degree. We now have two American degrees to go along with the 68 Iowa degrees that we have here in house. We're very proud of the membership that we have and the representation that we have. With that, that's all I want to say. Each one of these members, I would ask that they would introduce themselves and maybe the grade that they're in and share one takeaway that you had from the national convention.
All right, so my name is Alexander Delaney. I'm a senior at Gilbert and I'm the Gilbert FFA treasurer. And my personal favorite part about the convention was the career show. Basically, you go into this massive building and there's just hundreds of different companies. And they all want to talk to you and give you their free stuff and get you to listen to them. And what's nice about it is like, I'm interested in going into engineering. And there's companies like Case, John Deere, Commons, all these different companies that I can talk to. And they can tell me about scholarship programs, different internship ways to get into their company and start early so that I'm not, not behind, but with everybody else outside of college trying to find a job. I can be there already.
Hi, I'm Callie Folkman. I'm a sophomore at Gilbert. And one of the main takeaways that I had from this trip was the two main opening sessions, which were in the Bankers Life Fieldhouse, which is where the Indiana Pacers play. And both of these times, they were sold out. So there was a lot of people in there, if you can imagine. And there were keynote speakers. There was like in between the speakers, there was like, it played music and you got to dance or sing or whatever with the other FFA members. And we all, we all sat together, but also there was people from like California that sat in front of us, like people from all over that were around us. And it was just a good bonding experience. And you got to listen to the speakers, obviously. Like one of them was Leila Ali. She talked about her experiences in life and it was just a really good time.
I'm Ethan Kuhl and I'm a sophomore. And one of my takeaways was how vast FFA is and how much it expands over like the platform of agriculture. And there's so many careers that I never would have thought of are agriculture that are related to agriculture. And we went to a workshop and it was about choosing your career and it gave me a lot of insight in what I might want to do as I grow up. And it was really cool to see so many people there. It was a record attendance, around 60,000-ish. It was crazy. I had never thought a group would have that amount of people in it. So it was very crazy to see how many careers and how many people were there.
Hi, my name is Eric Davis. I am a senior in high school and I'm also serving as the president of the Gilbert FFA. And this is one of my favorite trips that I've ever been on in high school. And one of the days that we were there, we were able to go to Connor Prairie. And it is a town that is set back in like the 1850s, I believe. And all the people there, they have to stay in character. Like they have to act like they're, it's kind of interesting. One of the gals that we were talking to was asking us questions, like where are you guys from? And we'd say Iowa. They had no clue. And Carson broke his foot and she said, what'd you do? Broke it playing football with football. And yeah, it was, it was interesting talking with them. And I don't know if any of you guys know, but recently the FFA has purchased a forge at the high school. And that is something that we've all been getting to experience and learn because none of us have been around it. They had a blacksmith at this place. And for hours, we sat there and just got to talk and watch him do it with tools that they had 200 years ago. And it was, it was just awesome to see how they made stuff back then. When we walked in, he was actually making an accent from a piece of metal in a drill bit that he ended up forging together. And yeah, he was, he gave us life lessons too. And yeah, in a good way. And then when we got back to the convention, they gave us these guidebooks. And their main statement was, I can, we will. And I like the quote on the back. It said, "With another 2 billion people to feed by the year 2050, the need for students like you to enter in ag-related fields is greater than ever." So during this year's FFA convention, make a pledge to help double global food production over the next third year. If anyone is up to the challenge, it's you in the blue jackets.
Hi, my name is Kenyon Bryant. I am a junior at Gilbert High. And so my favorite part was also Connor Prairie, which is a living history farm here. And yeah, just sitting with the blacksmith, his knowledge was just crazy, how much he knew. And we used to ask him questions and he had an answer for everything. And he was kind of, we don't really know. Mr. Davis talked to him later, but yeah, he had some memories that like this was like his life. Like he wasn't really playing a role. This was actually him. And he said, like at age 14, he became a blacksmith. So he's been doing this forever. And he was just giving us little tips and tricks on how to become better at like forging and take more pride in like your work and the details and stuff and what we're doing. And it was just a good experience getting to talk to someone who's had years of doing their life work.
I'm Carson Folkman. I'm a sophomore. What I took away from the convention was, well, for one, like just going with the 10 members that we brought, I got to know a lot of the people better than I did before because like Eric and Alex, they're both seniors. So I hadn't really talked to them a lot, being a sophomore. But we bonded as a chapter, just the group that we went, as well as talking with other chapters because we were on a bus with, I think, four other schools, which also was connected with another bus with five schools on that. So we were all, those two buses went around. So we met people on our bus from Webster City, South Hamilton, all those. So we got to know those people and like what their chapters were like. They talked about what they did in FFA and like what they did at school. There's also, you met people from other states as well because like in those guidebooks, there's a page with each state on it. And people get a signature from someone from each state. So like someone will come up and ask you, they'll be like, hey, can you sign my book? And you, you know, go on Iowa and you sign your name. But then you, you sit there and you talk to them and you ask them about like where they're from in their state and like what that happens. But it was just cool to see what other states are doing and like how it relates to our FFA chapter.
Well, before we ask if there's any questions, we would like to thank the district for the chance to go. I know that the kids we select through an application process, they have some, some skin in the game too. The chapter helps support them if they fulfill their obligations. I know there's a lot of homework that has to get done ahead of time and it is right at quarters end, so there are some challenges there. But I, I am just so proud of how, how they look here. That's one thing that we require. They have to look sharp. And I know that it's not really maybe the, the hot date item to wear. If you want to all mind just turning around and showing the board back. As you see, they're pretty identifiable. There's a lot of price shows on wearing these jackets. And you can turn background. When you see them, we, we look sharp, we, we act sharp. And there's a lot of soft skills that go on with this as well. Going out of state into Indianapolis is a lot different than heading out of Franklin Township. And the way they present and represent themselves, they're, they are on time. Their early mornings, we're up at five. Oftentimes, we don't get to bed till 10 or 11 o'clock at night. But they, this is an opportunity to extend leadership. We just turned in membership. There's things that are due this time of year. And we thank you for the opportunity to try our leadership skills out. 165 strong is what we paid dues on for this year. Leadership is something that is fun to talk about, but when you see kids like these doing it every day, and yes, it is, it is fun for them to do. It's a lot, a lot of fun for me, even though this is year, I think, 29 of the national convention. Every year is special. And we've never had a group, and I probably say that every year, but every year, we just keep having a representation from the school that improves. And we hope a lot of them, they're charged now to come back and bring this back to their chapter. They have an all-chapter meeting on Friday that's a student-led opportunity. There's a lot of things coming up. You know, I know, just so you know, because this is something that I tell them not to brag about, one of the things we do just for the right thing. Veterans Day was this weekend. We had a group here that put those flags up, not so that you know they did it, but so that they can honor the reason for which the flags are up. And we talk about that in this organization as well. They have raised almost $6,000 jointly to help St. John Gift Hill Schools, which I hope to visit with you more about the GHS with the Gilbert High School. We're hoping to have some relationship in the future with, with that school system that was completely wiped out with the hurricane. They've generated some funds for a generator and with some help from the community. So there's a lot of neat things going on. Any questions that you'd like to ask the kids?
I'd just like to compliment you on your presentation. That's, that's great that you guys are going out there and taking these leadership roles and learning from blacksmiths and things of that sort. I think that's really great.
You can tell who's in the advanced metals and welding contract.
So I, I love the challenge you got of feeding the world because that fits with my own personal. Between that and educating, I think that's, that's what we have to do, right? So I'm just curious, how many of you at this point, I know some of you are sophomores, how many of you think at this point you might go into an agricultural type of career? And how many of you grew up on a farm? That's cool. Congratulations.
We do have, one, Jason Taylor was not able to be with us tonight. Jason did not represent at the World Food Prize. And just briefly, so we don't take time, we, we normally would, would share that out this time of year. We do represent the school in the World Food Prize. Jason Taylor and Eric served as two of the folks that did that earlier on at the Iowa Youth Institute this spring at Iowa State University. Through that process, they pick a, a topic, an area of study and a region to study, and they have to come up with a resolution for it. So in the past, it could have been, we've had people talk about the need for providing proper storage of food in India. Fifty percent of the food is spoiled in India. If we could only find a way to preserve it, we could double their, their food security. And Eric did one on micro gardens in Puerto Rico. Jason's was on irrigation in the Virgin Island region because there's no potable water. It has to be secured other ways because of volcanic rock base. We did have Jason advanced on through that process and was one of Iowa's 80 representatives that was down at the World Food Prize. It had to defend his paper. And they both defended papers at Iowa State. Jason defended his paper in the presence of Dr. Norman Borlon's daughter. So we, we had nice representation there. So we do have hunger fighters through the garden program. Of course, we continue to do that through the extended classroom to the south of the grounds as well. So if nothing else, thank you for letting us come in today.
All right. Thanks for coming.
That was for the teachers too. We forgot to clap on you. But you would expect. You're not going to insult us by leaving.
Thank you for coming in.
Is that Jen's? Couldn't get out of here fast.
I feel we have to leave now.
Okay, 2017-18 district priority. If anyone have anything that they would like to bring up for this month as far as the priorities?
Well, we did make a revision to that.
Oh.
I, we tried to, I just shared it with you. We tried to take some of the feedback that I think we'd heard to maybe simplify, to have the information there, but simplify a little bit. This was our effort. Basically, what it is, it's just instead of all of the different little boxes, we pretty much, it's just going to have the update. So if there's something new, it's there. Otherwise, it won't, you won't see something there. Does that make sense?
Yes.
Okay. We just, like that. So there is some. And I apologize, I forgot to share that.
I love this.
Much clearer. And I think it is all on one page. Is that better?
Thank you. Can I ask you a question? About the Tiger Time stuff, like that's new this year, right? Or is that like, are the students and staff, are they receiving that well? Is that going well? My son loves it, so I'm just curious what my son's thoughts are.
We just started our second rotation.
Yep.
And so I think it's going well. The kids that weren't requested for a targeted one got their first option for the ones they could choose from.
Yep.
So, so yeah, I haven't gotten any. We haven't, I haven't pulled them to see yet. I want to get through a couple of times so we can really get a sense of how it's going. But seems to be.
That's cool. Yeah. No, my son really, really enjoys that time. He's like emailing me stuff. He's like, Dad, we're going to build this and I'm going to do this. I'm like, you're building stuff. I'll watch you build it. It'll be great, man. Sorry, son. Any other questions on the district priority? Announcements and celebrations? Do you have anything that you'd like to have for announcement or celebration?
Well, since our last meeting, we have a customer team that are state champions. And also yesterday, the paper, Aaron Thomas was named as one registered post of the year.
And that's not just that class, right? It's out of the whole state, right?
It's pretty clout. Yeah.
That's great.
Elementary and intermediate was awarded a healthier U.S. challenge. Ron's award last week, the Department of Ed King gave out. So that was quality. We got it because of nutrition guidelines promoting health, fresh fruits, vegetables, and then as well as our wellness committee that needs and the physical activity component that our district has in place.
Yeah, nice coverage in the paper too.
Mindy Morris was recognized by Iowa Talented and Gifted Association for her work adventuring young incoming gifted ed teachers. So I don't know if they got the letter, but I got a letter from them just recognizing her. And then I want to recognize Mr. Johnson, our chorus teacher. I know Brian was at the performance and he invited in the Ainge Chamber Choir Artists, I don't know the name of the organization. And they did a combined with them. And I thought it was fantastic. We had a huge turnout. We knew it was going to be tight. It was more than, we had seats for, so we scrambled on that. But it was probably the best vocal music concert I've been to in my 14 years at Gilbert. So it was, it was fantastic.
Amazing. I, I was there as well. Mindy would take, put it on there. I mean, people were like tearing up. It was so, it was that good.
The last song, combined 68 choir, Ainge Chamber Artists were really good.
And to see the stage completely full like it was, was very cool.
I like seeing the multiple generations too, interacting up there. It's really great.
I have a new friend, my daughter said. I have a friend. She's an older lady than Wesley.
The Ainge Chamber Artists had then interned invited our eighth grade choir to come and sing with them at their December performance.
Oh, wonderful.
We'll send you the information on that, but, oh, that's great.
Just one comment on that. What was really impressive to me too is the topics that he had covered in these, you know, performances were really amazing. So I mean, it wasn't just, yeah, it wasn't just, you know, they sang beautifully, but the meaning and the background behind it was, was truly, truly impressive.
The history was explained and it was nice and I spent a brochure you could read. I mean, there was a lot to take home.
Rather than just picking random selections of music, and even last year, his, his music selections all tell a story. So this was about, he had picked songs that represent different groups that faced oppression, whether it was the Jewish faith, Irish, African. whether it was the Jewish faith, Irish, African Americans, Native Americans. And then at the end, the last couple songs were about renewal and hope and coming together. And so it kind of told the story as it went along. So the kids were learning to sing, but also learning, you know, about the power of music and how it can tell stories. So it was really, it was fantastic.
Couple of things at the high school. Suzieville Music Hall is a huge success. For those of you that got to see it, it was outstanding. It's just amazing when you, there were times where the stage was full of kids. It was impressive, absolutely impressive. Both nights were sold out, you know, capacity. It was just really great to see our kids shine. The second is the mental health awareness night. I'm not sure if we've covered that in a previous board meeting, I don't think so. But our counseling department organized a mental health awareness night where it was to try to erase or decrease the stigma of mental health. So what they did is they organized it around a keynote speaker that spoke about depression. And then out in our commons area, they had booths set up for a variety of providers that provide mental health services to families and young people. So families could come early and visit the booths and get information and then go to the keynote speaker. And then the best part about it is at the end of the night, they had breakout sessions every 30 minutes on a variety of topics. Depression, suicide prevention, self-harm. There were so many, I think there was.
Anxiety was one.
Yeah, anxiety was one. There was about eight options. And every 30 minutes, there was an opportunity to go to a different session. And when we originally started planning this, we thought hoping for 50 to 60 people, there was close to 300.
300?
So, you know, we were pretty excited about how it went and that we feel like this could be something that we could continue to sustain over the course of, you know, the time here. We've kind of had a three-pronged approach. First was to get some staff some training. The second was, what was to get some awareness out to our community members. And then the third prong is, what can we do to get information for our students and support our students best? And that's the portion that they're currently working on now. So those are two kind of really exciting things.
Just to piggyback, oops, I'm sorry, go ahead.
For the 300, was that advertised outside of the district? Or was that primarily folks associated with our district?
Well, we worked with the PTO, which helped to raise some money to do some advertising. We used Facebook, we used Twitter, we had flyers all over random communities. It was open to all areas around. There were people as far as Solon, the school district, Solon came off, brought a van of people. We're really hoping to tap into other school districts next year and bring more school professionals. But the biggest thing was, we wanted parents there, we want kids there. And so I think, you know, our focus in the future is going to be, what can we do to get young people to show up to these? Because, you know, that's who we want to hear this message in, their parents. How can we support these families and the students that, you know, may be struggling in silence or don't come forward due to the stigma? So if we can help to erase some of that, that was the goal. So it was pretty exciting.
And I think just the fact that 300 people showed up, you're walking down the halls, looking at the people that you go to school with and it's, you realize that so many people are in the same room. You know, you're not, you can kind of relate. And it was, it was good to see, I thought, the number of students and stuff that way. It was really good, man.
Tagging on to what he said, the county supervisors, they have an outreach meeting that they do. They did it actually on the 9th of November. And one of the topics that we were talking about was mental health, not only for schools, but for the county. And it was mentioned time after time about how they thought that Gilbert was leading the way in that area. But if you do get a chance, if you have a chance to talk to the county supervisors or any of those people, they do a great job. They brought all their people out, they talked, and I'm gonna pass this around to some of the things that they had had. But they talked about a lot of the different things that are happening in the county. They talked about the fact of trying to work with the school districts, especially on the mental health portion of it. And they don't have to do that. They don't, I mean, it was one of those nights that was cold and all get out and they came out and, you know, talked to us about a number of different things. And I do think that it helps, there for a while, we were frequent visitors to their meetings. And, you know, and, you know, it was a nice way to say, hey, we appreciate the fact now that we have a road that is paved all the way through Ames. So it was, it was a good situation there. I was trying to see if there's anything else. Oh, one other thing is a quick announcement. I think you guys already have it in your school board update, but we are moving forward with the easement with CenturyLink. Looks like that we will be trying to get the actual plot of where that new easement will be. I have sent that to John Haley and we're trying to get that worked out. And then again, that will be no cost to us as far as the move. And then they're looking at doing that in the spring of 2018. So I don't think that will interfere with anything that we have going. And I think that that's probably as good of a situation that we could have come out of that. That's a great outcome.
Was that well attended, the county board meeting?
So, so probably 15. But a lot of, a lot of people, like Mayor Pop was there, county, any of the council people, there was a couple, Terry was there, and then some from the surrounding area, so. But it's, I still think that's a good way to, you know, I guess, get together with those people and talk about some of the different ways that we can work together.
Yeah, it's good that you were there and thanked him for the road. I called Rick, I should call the other two. I mean, that was.
That is big.
Certified enrollment.
Friday was the final certified enrollment after all the adjustments. And we settled, our certified enrollment was up 4.6%. And our backs and seats are up 3.14%. I think we're pretty aware of that, that was the final.
So we isolated the variance of our 3% production growth? Like why we're off 0.14? That's a pretty good guess.
And then also, we wanted to share, Kerry, did you wanna?
This is, oh, we are, for the desk audit that we are required to do as part of the differentiated accountability piece through the state, when we do the certified enrollment, we just have to break it down by disaggregated data. So that's just what we've done here for you. So you can kind of take a look at the different pieces of data that we have in broken down enrollment.
Is that self-reported or how do you, how do you come up? How do you come up with the breakdowns for that?
Just through Power School.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, we didn't do it, it's just, Vicky just ran, Vicky just runs that report. Yeah.
And registration, they'll pick one.
Yes, that's right. We just, yeah, we don't do anything, it's just.
So our stats, correct me if I'm wrong, but our performance stats aren't broken down by race because what I've been told is we have, we just don't have any, enough to have any statistics. Do you have any idea what that percentage is, when that will start being reported? Because that creates quite a discussion.
Well, previously, No Child Left Behind standards left the number at, I think it was at least 10.
I was gonna say, yeah.
10 in a subgroup and then, and then there's some as highest, yeah, so that's kind of, and then I think 30 or 35, but No Child Left Behind has gone away. So it's, right now, we're sort of on it.
We're still waiting for the, for the, for the ESSA guidelines to come down after that has been approved.
It can always be something we do and we use as an internal document. Just the reason they wait for that number, that is just because of, it can be very pinpointed.
Sure.
At a certain point.
Sure. But internally, I mean, do you guys use that and look at that?
Thanks, Gil. Board reports. For board reports.
The Des Moines, okay?
And then is everybody in for that then? Will all be there Thursday?
Two days, I'm in for two days. Cause I need it. They asked for like a month-long program, but I just have two.
Two?
Yeah, two days.
Those will be good, though.
Yeah.
You doing like the finance?
Yep, 101 and 201. I'm gonna try to pull that off on the same day.
Gary Sinclair teaching you their one?
I have no idea.
You want Gary Sinclair?
I don't, I'm just listening to what I was talking.
Okay, next item of business, new business is a motion to receive and accept the long-range facility plan from Hala Architecture. Need any additional discussion on that report?
What does it entail to receive this from? Like you're saying, like, we accept this as the final draft?
Yeah, right, yeah.
We've talked through this a lot.
Yeah, I don't know what else to add tomorrow.
All right, I'll entertain a motion to approve that, or accept that.
Is that moved?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Stand's approved. Okay, now it's gonna get a little harder.
Is this available to public?
This document?
Yeah.
Do we, do we still have some?
I mean, not in hard copy, but it's available somewhere. Cause it would be nice.
Well, it's not out there yet because it wasn't finalized and accepted.
It will be available.
Yeah, I would imagine that will get a final approved document.
I absolutely agree that it needs to go to the community. I would suggest that we take a little bit of time and put some messaging around it before we just put out data.
Sure.
Because we'll obviously want to form it towards where we're going with the bond. So I, I think it needs to be available, but I'd suggest we do it in a staged communication.
You're legally entitled to anything that's shown on the screen to have a hard copy for you to present at a board meeting. So you can just request it at the district office. Anything you see on the screen, you can have a copy of.
So you saw the title slide?
Yeah, that's all you get then.
I agree with you, Tyler.
Okay, you wanna leave the discussion with these?
Well, what we need to go ahead and do, and like you said, this is gonna be the challenge for us. Yeah, we've talked about this on a number of different occasions, trying to prioritize the projects that will, could, we can discuss it and you can take possible action to prioritize that for the GO bond election. I think it was the 30th that we had some information that was discussed as far as, that was the last work session. And you probably have your copy of that. And then I also think, Deb, do you wanna talk about the one that you put out?
Yeah. Yeah. So ever since we started talking about this stuff, I just kind of, I put the various documents that we received into like an Excel workbook, just so I could keep track of some different things and maybe add my own kind of metadata and try to just understand what it meant. Because a lot of times when we're talking about costs, there were some things where, yes, adding additional classroom is a cost in and of itself, but also it results in additional costs you have to consider, you know? And so I was trying to just keep track of it. After the last meeting where they came, the teachers or the administrators came back and had that, that new proposal that was district-wide, the priorities, I kind of looked at that information and kind of coupled it with the original proposal. I just started messing around with some stuff and. And so I came up with something that I thought was like an idea to start with. It's kind of small that you could see this, but basically this is 1 through 29, I think is what it was. And I talked to some people, I was just kind of trying to get a feel, like there was a few things that I thought might be good to swap out. You know, we've got, talked to Mike about, the last meeting, they talked about having that potential of a detached building. And although that would meet some needs, it really wasn't the ideal solution to fix a problem. So, I mean, I just, since I was just messing around, I just swapped that out and I put the original one back in. I also, you know, I, I'll be honest, it's a personal thing that I, and idea that I've always, in the, in the recent plans, they've talked about a couple of different classroom, class space growth opportunities. The middle school, obviously with the four, and then a total of eight at the high school. And they split it into four and four. It's, you know, four classrooms, kind of some additional space along with the VOTEC, et cetera. And then an additional four in five years. And I just, I felt like, I took off the additional four that would come in five years. I felt like it was unknown at this time. And I felt like, maybe within this amount of time, if we concentrate and we have four classrooms that we agreed we needed at high school sooner rather than later, and a VOTEC and a career training room, you know, that those were kind of woven in, what could we do with that? And how creative could we get with that without biting off eight different classrooms? You know, not all of our classrooms are full at the high school. Could we be creative in some of that space? Aside from that, didn't really do much of anything. Did look at the baseball softball. They had these options where we have a new field, new stadium, also kind of greatly enhance the old stadium. I just took a shot at one and said, what if you did the new and didn't do much to the old? And I plugged those numbers in. The things that were really left off were, like I said, the four rooms, additional rooms at the high school that were five years down the road. And then some of this, like the lowest priority items, some look and feel of the elementary school things.
Can you scroll down?
And it came up, if you come over, there's one more, just over, Gil, one more. This is like a total of all of them, if you just go over one more column and down a little bit. All of those, it even included the fine arts edition. It came up to about 13 million, 13.4 million.
That's all that you had in the list?
Yeah. So it was just an idea. I felt like we've talked a lot about the individual projects. Just wanted to get something out there that we could discuss, whether that be what we decide or not, but maybe we had to start moving in a, an idea to start kind of.
Discussion.
Discussion, yeah.
The colored ones are not included in that 13?
The colored ones are not included. And so I just, I color-coded them for my own, cause I like to do that. But it's like, you know, thinking maybe there's some of them that we could consider with PEPOL funds in the future if we needed, or other funding opportunities, not necessarily through a bond. And I know we talked to Travis, back to this four class, the additional four classrooms. I don't want to come off as saying I don't think that that space is important, just simply that we don't know for sure yet if we need it and what we could do in the meantime without it. And as you know, we mentioned, Travis already mentioned that maybe there's alternative funding for that, you know, down the road. I think there was like 1.4 million.
So we'd be leaving that off the list, but with the confidence that you'd either, in five years, if it's needed, you'd have a creative way of adjusting the space or you'd have additional capacity to build it?
Yeah. Right.
The, oh boy, the band room in the high school, was this the more expensive version?
It's the slightly less, it's the $400,000 less, which I make it a note. I mean, they do, with that option, you do have less storage.
What was the original number?
1.9 was the original number.
A lot more than that, yeah.
But the thing is, is like, and I don't know, I certainly want to hear what everybody says about this because this is just a stab, but we are going to be asking for 12, 13 million dollars. And I would hate for us to already be selling ourselves short with a project. That was a meaningful project. Like for example, the middle school. That was awesome and it was great that people were trying to make a sacrifice, you know, to get more projects in. But at the same time, I felt like that wouldn't be a solution that really met Mike's needs. And so I just kept making that.
That one's in there at what value?
It's the green one up at the top.
That's the, that's the original?
The multi-purpose.
I just re, I took out the multi-purpose. I also, I'm sorry, I took out the detached building. I took out the, I think there was a couple things that were actually line items that were related to that. Like the vestibule was another one down at the bottom. I just simply reintroduced the original.
So that would include renovating the lockers and building the attached space and a vestibule?
Yeah. Which just, I mean, this is my own opinion, but it felt like it was a better sound investment than, and then having, you know, to force kids to kind of hike across the parking lot to a detached room. So, and I thought the vestibule, I tried to look like. And I thought the vestibule, I tried to look, like I said, I looked and I said, okay, does this add cost, operating costs? Does this potentially reduce operating costs either by making our facilities more efficient?
Yeah.
Um, and the vestibule, to be honest, there's just, it protects the gym floor.
It's, yeah.
I mean, that's one thing that it does, it does other things too, it helps, but. So I just took a stab at it, and I, like I said, certainly not the only idea, but just wanted to maybe start something, I guess, start the conversation.
Discussion?
Yeah, yeah. And it's an Excel spreadsheet, I know this is PDF, but I do actually have all of the projects on there, so I've made it easier to filter and kinda slice and dice things on the fly.
Though, thank you for doing all the stuff, by the way, this is great.
Oh my goodness.
The, the one, one question I have is going back and forth on the fine arts part with the band vocal improvements. I, I think, so we, we dropped square footage of the new addition, but we thought we'd make that up in classroom space if we did less storage, is that the way that we talked about that? I mean.
I thought that we mostly lost storage in the revised, I, I thought that we mostly, we, we lost storage. I, I don't, I don't.
Yeah, maybe you don't have, maybe someone does, like that's why, like just like the same logic you had around the,
Yeah.
Around the, uh, middle school, you know, addition stuff, like I wanna make sure we have that same logic when we're talking about the vocal,
Yep.
band vocal stuff too, like, it seems to be like, well, three years from now, you have another million dollars to make it bigger.
Yeah, and I was also like listening, like Byron Tinder, I had spoken to him offsite, and he was, you know, mentioning, which he mentioned here in this room. Um, at some point, vocal, it's not about just adding spaces for students, you're really talking about an additional teacher and, you know, additional.
Yeah.
Um, and so it's not always just about space, is what I heard, and maybe I misheard that, but it wasn't always just about space to accommodate the need, but other things. Um. One of the big things that, there's a vote, I think, I get these confused, it's a VOTEC classroom, which is not, no, that's not right. There's the one that is the existing ag where they're at, and it's undersized and it's not very safe.
Expansion of the shop area?
Mm-hmm. And then there's that additional building, and I was hoping that, um, that could be maybe flexible space or, I mean, I don't know, I, I should, I, I shouldn't be the one making decisions about that, but it was like, it could be potentially flexible and.
Well, I was wondering, Deb, if the band room might be better for the flex space, if, depending on how many, how many, uh, periods they need that for, I'm not sure if that could be used for anything else. What do you think, Vic? But definitely a possibility?
Well, I mean, I suppose it depends on what you put in there and how, you know, what space you need as far as classroom space. I'm sure Byron wouldn't be real excited about moving chairs, moving chairs back and.
Yeah, oh sure.
There's probably some possibilities for sure, but, uh.
Maybe how we design the chairs or whatever.
Depends on how it's designed and what time it's disposed.
Yeah.
Well, and I think there's parts of this too that indicate when it's needed. Nope, not on that one, I don't, sorry. But, you know. This was, I just took a stab at it, maybe the, the full-on is better. It's four hundred thousand dollars, I can't believe I'm saying that, that makes me kinda queasy just to think four hundred thousand. But if it meets the need and it's ten, ten years down the road and it's a solid solution. You know, I think those are valid discussions.
I just, I think we would be remiss if we built something that really doesn't.
Doesn't have the space.
Doesn't fit the long-term need. And I, Mike, I appreciated your email about do it, either do it right or don't do it, and you're fine with either. I thought that was great, because as I reflected on it, I'm, I'm in the same camp as Deb, I think it does need to happen and if we can put it together, then let's do it, let's do it attached so that there isn't the issue of going, even if it's a hundred feet, but a hundred yards or whatever outside. So, I, I like what you have here, Deb, and I guess when I reviewed it, I, I think we kinda come up with some of the same things. And what I would describe is, the vast majority of this list, we really haven't had much disagreement on, so we're in agreement.
Yeah.
And I think there's three things that probably continue to have the dialogue, which I think you've probably may be addressed for us. The one is the additional four classrooms at the high school. The other is the middle school, uh, enlargement of the, or middle school locker room and, and multipurpose room. And the, the third is the baseball softball. So those would be the three that we've probably spent most of our time dialoguing on, well, what do you do, what do you do? Um, round numbers. Uh. It's just a little bit more than ten million for the agreed list, in other words, the part that we really have said, we absolutely agree with priorities and that's, that's what they should be. And then, if you then take out the four high school, the, the last four high school rooms.
Yeah.
And you take out the, the locker room and independent indoor practice and insert the four, one million four hundred sixty thousand dollar original plan. And you put in the baseball softball and not all of the renovations to the current. It comes out to a very similar number to what you have, so I don't know if those are all the lines that, that, that we've come up with, but. I, I think we've got a list that we agree on, and then there's these three items that probably are the remaining ones that how do we wanna go? Do we wanna say they're in the bond and therefore the bond is thirteen point five? Or do we go less of a bond and we pick, choose not to do some of them? That's, that's where I would come out.
Yeah, and I think it's fair to say, like, I just said baseball softball stadium, because the truth is to renovate that old space was like one, it was a lot. I don't know, one point six, seven million, I don't know, with all like lights, the concession, the, because it also required us to build some additional practice fields, you know? Because we just don't have enough, uh, space. And so it, it began to be this, okay, do you build on an old space with limited? Or do you, does that become a middle school field or you build a little, I don't know, so it's not like I, I feel passionately, not aware about that, I just, I just picked one. So I think people should talk about that and see what makes sense. Same with the, well, same with the soccer practice fields, that was on there. I've heard people say that we've got a lot of added space just recently, maybe the soccer fields aren't an immediate need, I don't know.
They will be a need when we build the elementary school, for sure. The new, the, the part you renovated just this fall, Tim?
Yeah.
How much, I mean, that seems like that's got, what's the intent for that soccer space?
To be used for, um, soccer practice.
And it's east of the high school buildings, I write north of the track structure?
Yes.
Okay.
Correct.
And that was all smooth, seeded and irrigated?
Yes.
Or set up for irrigation?
No, irrigation is, it's in there.
I think the, the nice part about if we were to put in another practice soccer field is, is then we could, uh, the combination of, it, it opens up more soccer for the little guys. Um, we can make that a little guy baseball field, because we have, you know, a couple extra fields available, I just think it, it, it really makes a nice plan from elementary to high school, if, if we increase that capacity, cause the reality of it is, is we're adding uh, forty, fifty kids that are gonna be playing soccer, they're gonna be playing baseball, they're, they're gonna be running track, and so there's just gonna be this continuous press on our, uh, athletic facility, so I, I would be in favor of, of, uh, putting that practice field in, because the nice part about it too is it can be used for soccer, it can be used for football, it can be used for, for lots of things there at the middle school, so I think it has, has a lot of appeal for its versatility.
And that's, that's in, that made your list, right, Deb? Yeah.
That is in there at the hundred ninety.
Number twenty-four?
Yeah, I, I mean, we had, when we left that meeting the last time, we kind of had this imaginary red line that was at the, there was like this list, I think it was pretty much starting, hmm, I can't remember if it started with that fine arts edition or just the, uh.
Taking out the high school four classrooms is really kind of beat up the discussion.
Like I said, I don't mean for, I don't mean for that to, to sound like it's a, it's just not an important thing, I think above, I, I think our number one priority is classroom space. My hope is just that we could be creative with some of the space we have and maybe achieve the same result.
I, I think, I'm sorry to interrupt you.
No, I'm sorry, I'm.
No, like, cause I think that's, that's walking into something that, like, I haven't, we haven't had a lot of discussion with at the high school, is outside of ag-related stuff and sort of that shop space, like, so the idea of like twenty-first century learning spaces in the high school, like, we put those cool nooks in the middle school and like had some interesting rooms, but then in the high school, we're kinda building four more squares. And I'm curious, while we need that now, could we use those as like, even just the way that we furnish them, as like experimental things to maybe inform what we do in the future for the, the new actual square footage for student education? Um. I, I just, I just feel like we haven't had a lot of discussion, we went into it saying twenty-first century learning is a big priority, and then we kinda came out with like, or at least presented to the board, here's four boxes for, for kids to learn in, and so maybe in subcommittees or another conversations, and there's been more twenty-first century learning, like breakout room spaces or multi-use classrooms in interesting ways, so I don't know, I just, as a board member, I haven't heard it presented that way to us at all. And so I'd be hesitant to build not just four, but eight more squares for students to learn in, if we, if we wanna move towards a twenty-first century model in the high school. Now, I don't know, I'm saying buzzwords, you know, I don't know what that means for your staff, like, for a long-term sort of like how kids are educated in high school and all that stuff, I'm just thinking at the building level needs. I haven't heard a lot about that at the high school space.
But the, these first four are, seems to me are all about, they're flexible space, it's art, it's creating the, um, the, the art room is truly an art room, it's not a remodelled science room, all of that, right? So the first four, I'm very comfortable with that twenty-first century approach. I mean, those, FFA students are a perfect example of twenty-first century, right? It's the next four that, I, I guess I'm following with Deb, is, we're not saying we're not gonna do it, but we're probably not ready to even describe what it is.
Yeah.
And when we get to that point where we need four more or eight more classrooms, absolutely.
Yeah.
And put a lot of time and effort into, well, what does that look like, and how do we now start changing this campus even more? I think these, these next four classrooms will change the campus with, with that additional space. But I, then I would agree with you, don't just slap four cookie cutter classrooms down in five years, what, what does that look like?
I like us to be aggressive then, in those four classrooms we are gonna put in, so we do the art room, I agree, like, I mean, I, it's funny to call it twenty-first century learning, like, I had art, I had shop in high school, you know, I graduated in sixty-two. No, I'm just kidding, but I, uh, no, you know, like, so what, like, if, if we do have an art room, but then say have those three other kinda interesting classrooms that are, that are again, more kinda just boxes, like, could we be experimental in how we lay those out that might inform what the next bar, you know, for us, like, hey, we found out that this just doesn't work, or, or actually, you know, this works so well, we are gonna renovate and add some more square footage. I just, I wanna continue to push on what that looks like for our students. Um, and I agree, like, I love the shop space, I, I think what they presented at the FFA was fantastic. The art rooms, and all, and like even the fine arts additions, those are all really great things to do. How do we keep pushing that, those ideas even more into like traditional math subjects and stuff like that too? And so if we could, I love the idea of pausing on the additional four ones, take these first four ones, maybe even just push a little bit on those and say, hey, those ones that are gonna be not art, you know, can we do some cool stuff in there to, to experiment with things?
Do we? That's the funny part, cause none of us are gonna be doing anything cool in those rooms, but.
Yeah.
The, you know, hoping, hoping that it's something that, you know, if, if the schools say, well, listen, that's, that's not what we need. You know, I think we need to know that, but the idea too is, you know, five years out, we have a clearer picture of it, because of everybody saying, ten years out is harder. But I think we have to be, I mean, responsible with our other funds, so that if we're wrong and we need those in five years, we have another means of paying for that, right? Because we can't afford to be, I'm, I'm hoping we can hedge. We can't just leave people out, right? I mean, this is our number one priority, to have educational space, I just think we were.
It's interesting that tonight was the certified enrollment, so I just went back and looked at numbers.
It doesn't make a good case, but.
Oh, it does. Cause I went back to two thousand thirteen, which was the first year that we got the four buildings. And just the, the enrollment changes over those four years. So elementary has actually gone from three twenty-six down to three sixteen. Intermediate's three twenty-three and it's gone up five students to three twenty-eight, so a two percent. Middle school's gone from three twenty-four to three eighty-five, that's a nineteen percent increase, and high school's gone from four sixteen to four seventy-eight, that's a fifteen percent increase. So the district's gone up nine percent in the last four years, but it's in the two buildings that we're talking about.
Yeah.
So I'm, I'm with you, I think they've done a nice job with the middle school on that space. Tonight, I don't think we need to, we're not voting on, well, what's that architectural plan, but we can say we go with those first four and we want to encourage Vic and the, the group that works on the architecture to be creative with that.
Yeah, absolutely. I feel real comfortable with that.
I think you have to talk about the baseball softball stadium, and is that the right thing to do though, right? I mean, it, as opposed to just really improving where we have it, and I, that's where I would look to other people, because I don't know the history of that. I mean, we had some people who were pretty.
I'd be curious from the back table too, I don't know if you've seen this or have access to it, that's not, you know, maybe.
Just got out at like fourth.
But, like, are there pieces that got dropped out of Deb's proposal that you're like, oh dear, I can't believe you took out the?
But there was nothing dropped out from the last discussion.
Yeah, there was that four room.
The four room.
Minus that, it's all the same as this top one.
Everything else, everything else is still above that one, it's these down here.
So last, last month, or last meeting, it was, it was number five, the
Right.
additional four classrooms.
Yeah.
I wrote down here that we did talk about that being maybe an alternate.
Yeah.
In a bidding.
Travis mentioned that that's like, it was like one point up.
So that would be a number five on last times.
And I have that, we have a PDF of this, but in the spreadsheet I did capture the revised.
Fourteen point eight, if you wanted that as the alternative.
Yeah, or, or maybe that makes sense to put back in and you don't, you don't, you take something else out.
Just, just a clarification, the numbers you're talking about assumes the cheaper option for the band room?
Yes.
It does.
More expensive option?
It does, and I'm not.
Because I think Tyler said something about, we should do it right, and then we never followed up on what.
I don't think we, I don't think we.
Cheaper or more expensive?
Right, it's like an additional four hundred and twenty thousand dollars. I mean, this is, these are estimates, right? We're also hoping like for a good bidding environment and hopes that some of these things can come under this, but, um, again, that's a good point, we, I think that's something to discuss, should something else come off. To go full on with that.
Vic, do you know, has the new downsized fine arts portion for the high school been shared with Byron? Have you had any feedback at all from him on that?
No, Byron is, is open to any adjustments that need to be made, he just wants to ensure that his space is adequate for his future needs.
Okay. And that, and, and since we weren't like part of that discussion, how they got to one point five from one point nine million, that still accounts for exactly what you're saying?
They can, we really took a chunk out of the storage space in the middle, I think, didn't that picture?
This, this does reduce SF and interior work.
Storage, just, yeah.
Reduce square footage and interior work?
Yeah.
And it still accommodates, accommodates one hundred twenty-five students.
Yeah.
Yeah, so some of that interior work, if I remember, is like individual practice room areas, some storage stuff. Um, I don't know if I have those plans in front of me.
Individual practice areas weren't gonna go away.
Okay.
He basically was taking that strip that had storage, he was flipping it, but the existing band room was slated to be a large group ensemble area and some office areas, so what he was saying is, that might have to become storage in lieu of.
Okay.
It would limit your ensemble areas, wouldn't it?
He wouldn't get any extra ensemble areas in the area, yeah.
Any additional comments?
I think, to, your turn to the baseball stadium one, I'm, I think I'm the most anxious around that one. Uh, just coming into, into this whole process, I was kinda worried about sort of the expectations, some of which were shared by the patrons on the last meeting, you know, with us, like, um, but there's, I know there's a lot of like hope for that, and, and I don't have any like outward resistance to it, I just wanna make sure that we've got, let's do it if we got all of the other things in, in order, I'm all for funding that and supporting that.
Still the lowest.
Especially given what you brought up, I don't know, two meetings ago. Especially given what you brought up, I don't know, two meetings ago, like, well, if we don't do that, there's a ton of other work that's just a little bit less than this anyway that we have to do, and you referenced earlier today, like.
My biggest concern with that is we have forty to fifty kids more every year.
Yeah.
They're going to be playing all these games. And so even if we do get that field fixed up, we need another one.
Yeah, oh yeah.
And so if we're going to be, if we're going to be putting the money into something, I'd rather be putting the money into the new field than not the old field because for middle school kids, you know, that field will be fine.
What, hey Tim, with all of this like additional athletic facility stuff, what about maintenance of it? Do we have the, like, is that going to require more staffing or grounds work or? I'm not, I mean to put you on the hot seat, I'm just, I'm curious about that.
No, we, we've talked about this as an administrative team. I mean, we are pushing the limits of what we can do and what we currently have for maintenance staff when it comes to that. I mean, ideally, we would have somebody to be in charge of fields.
At all four facilities here, they would just, yeah.
Yeah, grounds and, grounds and. That's a need now, right? Really, it is.
Yeah.
Money's just not there.
No, absolutely. Is there any, I don't know if I'll sell that product tonight, but is there any like exploration with like the booster clubs of of doing anything to, to possibly help fund or finance people to take care of some of the facilities?
Um, we have now, we had a discussion before about, I think what that was, discussion was on whether or not maybe this um, the educational foundation helping out the decision that we were talking about, maybe communications that we were talking about.
Yeah, cause I just remember the hybrid model was proposed for that and it didn't go anywhere, but I'm just curious if you.
Yeah, cause I don't know if we wanted to go down that road or not.
Yeah, you'd almost have to contract it out. It's hard to have an employee, I think.
Yeah, what you run into is, okay, what if the funding discontinues, what are you going to do? You know?
That's kind of, that's where I think it's tough with communication issues are as well.
Now, we could look at different options such as like a stipend, like we do with coaches for somebody to be in charge of these fields. This season, this season, this season. That would be something that, that I'd kick around.
Just all concrete fields, man.
Tim is very nice when he says that. We are tapped as hard as we can be right now.
Yeah.
Uh, and you, you don't have to, you can look back there and see the heads nodding about the fact of one of the things that we've looked at on a prioritized list of what we need to add, and that's something with grounds. So, I, I want you to realize that when you add more grounds, you're adding more responsibility there.
I think, yeah, so I'm not looking at it like, hey, this is the reason why we shouldn't do it. I'm just thinking, hey, if we do this, we have to also be thinking about this other, other need as well. I mean, it's the same as adding classrooms, we need to put teachers in those classrooms to teach too, so. Money.
Right.
Lindsay?
Yep.
Do we have like, um, any kids that are considering going into turf management where this could be incorporated into the ag program?
Yeah, I, I was really not joking.
And if anything, no, seriously, because Iowa State has like the best in the country when it comes to that. It's so, you know, and this would be an awesome opportunity for our kids. We're going into that and then maybe get some interns or people who would, you know, like this could turn into a project, so it's an educational experience and at the same time benefit.
That's, that could be a possibility.
John, John Davis and I have talked about that, having our kids, he was my Iowa State kids. Again, in his standpoint, that's additional things that he has to do.
Right.
So again, you may be talking about a staffing issue, unfortunately, but I think that's definitely something to explore.
That's more in the stipend category though, right, than like another full-time employee or something. Yeah. That's good to know.
The thing that we're running into right now is like, people are not satisfied with the current softball baseball field. Well, what you have to have is you have to have someone more than just someone to, and I'm not saying to do, obviously anything different there, someone just to mow it. You gotta have someone that knows what they're doing when they go ahead and they weed seed, fertilize or the whole bit, and it has to be done almost on a year-round basis so that you get it to the prime example.
So let's do that. Let's get turf management intern in.
I just, I'm just telling you though, the more we spend on this, we're, we're going to have to look at where our priorities are.
Yeah.
Well, I guess, uh, I'll go out on the record and say, I agree with Brian's assessment that if you're going to spend as much on repairing the old as the new, I'm fully supportive of the new. And I like the order that Deb's put together here and I agree with the, well, not to go off the top with the baseball softball, I'll say, I'll just say that for baseball softball. Because you can see right here, three of the bottom four are what you would spend to renovate the current facility, that's nine hundred and seventy thousand dollars.
If you choose to do that.
If you choose to do that, right.
Either that or you discontinue the programs from the safety standpoint. We also need, we have to have additional fields, I mean, and so that's the original discussion was for the practice fields. And that in itself is
Million three, man.
One point three five. So you had one point three five with nine hundred and seventy. And you're at two point three two. So I, I think it just goes with the, the whole campus plan that now, okay, now those current baseball softball can be focused primarily on middle school. Now, you couldn't play tournament game there, but
Right.
primarily middle school and you have a high school campus, I mean, we just keep moving in that direction, so. And, and if we need maintenance, we needed maintenance last year, we'll need maintenance next year. Let's figure out how to do it, let's get creative, let's let's use the community with interns and as Deb and I were talking, students for that matter.
If we go with the not adding to the current fields, are they safe enough for the middle school to play on?
Well, so there was still, I think there was like a hundred thousand dollars for like the ma, the minor. I don't know, I think we'd have to decide if that has to be done or not.
Repair existing baseball softball fields, one fifty.
There was like that, that was the revised, skinny down, so it was really just repairing that field. I think it was higher fences, which you might not need, but it, you know, if it was a middle school field, you might not need it. I, I don't know enough about that, but I mean.
Yeah, I think that can be reduced because of the fence. You've got to repair the outfield.
What about the lights or the leakers or the paving?
It's none of that, because, you know, I guess you choose that, do you have two nighttime stadiums or do you have one and a daytime field? You know, the one, I think the one thing that I just want to mention before we kind of whatever start to wrap this up, I think we do have to consider the fact that this could be an issue, adding, spending two point three million dollars on a baseball softball field could be seen as by some, it, it's not a multipurpose field, and I, you know, I'm not trying to cut down my own idea, but it's not a multipurpose field. I do, that said, I think it's, it's needed, but will something like this, uh, hurt the chances of others? I don't know. Or are people more, I don't know what, I don't know what our, the focus group said. Given the choice, would they rather, do they see it as a better spend in the current spot than a stadium, right? Not everybody thinks that new, new football stadium was a good purchase. It's cool, it's nice to sit there, but not everybody does. I mean, am I crazy about that?
The reality is.
Some people think it was a little bit much, right? And so, I don't know, I have fewer friends now, but um, I think that, that's something that we have to consider, right? This is a.
It seems to me the baseball side, the baseball thing is the stretch for me, that's the stretch goal, like if we can do it, awesome. If we can't, I'm okay with a much reducer baseball thing. I just don't know how, like, I, I see all the other priorities headed as significantly more important than the baseball one. But if we have the money, I think, yeah, I'm in favor of the baseball.
Well, what if we propose, the, the thing I don't think we resolved yet is the four hundred thousand on the band room, so I think we gotta, we gotta weigh in with that, but, but, um, I, I think the, the question before us is, um, we're either at thirteen, what's that, thirteen, thirteen-five or fourteen million, right? And then what I would say is, is whatever, whatever the bonding issue is, that's what has to be backed out of the baseball and softball stadium. So if we get fourteen million or thirteen, you know, we gotta pick one of those numbers when we make this vote.
Mm-hmm.
But then whatever, whatever doesn't fit in the bonding then comes out of the, the baseball and the softball and we'll hammer that out when it comes, but if we get the thirteen and a half, we'll do it as is, if we, we get twelve.
You're saying based on valuation or what, when you say?
Yeah, based on the geo bond. So if we can get thirteen and a half million of geo funding, we do it all. If we get twelve million, then it's going to come out of the, the baseball.
And again, that, the unknown you're saying is valuation or?
Well, yeah, January, yes.
The, and the unknown too is the actual cost of these projects. These are just estimates that.
Yeah, that, this is simply a list that you intend to pursue.
So we don't know that, we don't know.
Until you put them out for bid.
A positive bidding environment, we might run into a situation where there's room. I feel the worst of the four hundred and twenty thousand.
Do you want to have that provided into our conversations here or? I don't know, is anything from the back table, is anything we're talking about? Make you anxious, nervous? Is that unfair to ask you that, which is also.
Cause I feel like I could be sick, I don't know.
I'm, I'm gonna just, I'm gonna just say this, but I think it just needs to be said. I don't know how many more times we can, as a group here, can keep prioritizing. I think at some point.
You gotta make a decision.
A decision has to be made. We've given input for, for several months now, we've spent numerous hours bickering back and forth with each other and there's only so much of reorganization we can do, but a decision has to be made. Every focus group has their own priorities.
Sure.
You talk to the band people, I can bring in thirty people next meeting.
Yeah.
You know, we can talk to the baseball people, they can bring in thirty people.
Yeah.
At some point, I think what needs to be done is we just need to have some decisions that need to be made at, at this end to prioritize what you, you feel is best for the district.
Yeah.
I just think that needs to be said.
All right.
I'm not speaking online, but.
No, that's, that's what we need, I appreciate that.
Sorry if I'm speaking for everyone here, but.
Yeah. Any other comments from administrators?
So I would move, if, are you taking a motion then on action?
Yes.
And it's a motion to take action on a list that then will go to a bond request? What exactly, how should I state this motion?
I think, I.
I don't think a lot of you answered this.
Prioritize the list of projects.
My understanding though, just before we put Gayle on the spot here, give her a little time to think about it, but but the understanding that we had from Travis was is we have twelve million. That's, that's a doable deal. And then this movement up to the potentially the fourteen and a half million that we talked about last meeting is going to be dependent upon valuations that we'll find in January.
But, so my question, John, is what motion are you asking for tonight?
Well, I would, I would, you know.
That we, we're, we're moved, our motion is to approve a list that will go to a bond committee to then come in and request to initiate this?
I would, I would go with something stronger than that, if, if you're agreeable to it, and it would be something to the effect of let's, let's approve thirteen and a half million dollar bond issue if we get the funding in January and to the extent that, uh, the projects come in over budget, then it's going to come off of the softball and baseball complex.
Correct.
Then everybody's clear on, I think what Vic says is exactly what I think. Somebody's got to make a decision and let's, let's get on with it.
So I move to approve the list that Deb has come up with, with the, uh, addition of taking the band room back to the nineteen, one point nine million. So that would be in around number of fourteen million dollar list that will go out for bond.
Do we have a second?
And sorry, just to clarify what you're saying then, that the the baseball stadium is still like the, the, the bottom kind of stretchy goal of if we can do it. And, and then where does that other four hundred for the band room fit in as well?
No, I, that, that's in there. So that's on a list that comprises our best estimate of fourteen million.
Okay, yeah, so upsize the band room back to one.
And say if we, just to, just to clarify, if we got less than that, we couldn't do the baseball stadium and we got a little less even than that, then it would go revert back to the band room here.
If we get less than that, we're going to have a lot more conversations.
Perfect, yeah, I'm in on that.
We're taking the band room from the fourteen ninety that's on here to approximately one point five, it's one point nine two. One point nine two, sorry, okay.
That's, that was the original one that he presented to us.
Okay.
Yes, I'll second what Tyler just said.
Okay, so we're just saying that's the project list and then, uh, we'll come back in the event, uh, we don't get fourteen million dollars worth of funding, uh, in January. Do I have a second?
Yeah, I seconded.
You got a second?
Yeah, I seconded.
Any further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? It stands approved. Thank you.
That was, that was, that was last. I mean, I think he said it well, Tyler, we're, we're in agreement with.
And we don't ever have to call the Deb list again, thank you very much.
The list that Deb provided.
He's not the Deb list, yeah.
Thank you for working on that.
Oh, gee, my goodness.
Yeah.
I just want it to be like.
I want to know what the first two copies were, this is copy, copy, copy three.
I know, I struggle to get it submitted. I was embarrassed by that IT person.
Okay, that's a good discussion. Request for additional allowable growth, Gayle.
Okay, this allowable growth is just for spending authority, there's no property tax dollars, there's no dollars behind that. That will come April fifteenth if you guys decide to do that. So this basically is, um, the LEP is limited English proficient, just meaning we have additional costs outside of what the program was funded. And so we're just asking for the additional growth, allowable growth of the fifteen one. And then the increase, of course, we had increased enrollment. And so we need, are asking for the funding of that at four thirty-six, four hundred and thirty-six thousand, four ninety-two. And the limited English proficient, the ELL beyond five years, we had additional students, and so we're asking for the, uh, growth of the seven thousand three hundred and thirty for additional spending authority.
Entertained a motion to approve that allowable growth.
Can I ask a question, Lee, first? Who, who are we asking for this?
The school is asking.
The board, so we're, we're, we're ending up with this.
Yeah, we're asking the, uh, school budget review committee, basically the, the department of ag saying we would like this spending authority, so it increases the amount we can spend.
Okay, sorry, got it.
That's a great clarified question.
Do, we have a, do we have?
Comes from John's bank.
Wait, do I have a first? Do I have a second?
I have a second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All opposed, stands approved. New board policy.
Well, we have a couple of new board policies here. The first one is, um, I, they had a, sent out a mandatory board policies. And so, um, I gave that to Jen and she went through and, uh, for some reason, we did not have two fifteen. And it's a mandatory, so that's the first one. So I don't know what the committee was doing, but.
That was Brian's.
I'm sorry, I submitted that one.
And then, um, this second one is, I was enlightened, I attended a procurement com, uh, meeting.
Fascinating.
Federal, um, and so what they're saying is to meet our requirements for the nutrition procurement procedure. Currently, um, we have a limit of forty thousand dollars for food as a board level. And currently our dairy products are forty-three when we take bids in July for the, the dairy products. If we don't up this, what we would need to do, and it's okay, but we'd have to go to a major newspaper, which for us would be Des Moines. And we would have to advertise. Now, we only get usually one bid. And so in order to not go to the Des Moines Register to advertise, we can just simply increase it to give us some room. So this year we spent forty-three, if we up the forty to fifty thousand, we could continue doing the practice we're currently doing. Or we keep it at forty and we have to publish the ad in the Des Moines Register.
And how much does that cost?
Des Moines Register is pretty expensive. I'm thinking it's around, uh, we, we har, we try not to go there. When we advertise for a job, I think it's around seven hundred dollars or more to advertise for. So anyway, that's, that's the purpose of this, to meet that, um, the threshold for the, the milk bids that we currently do it, so.
And you mentioned that we rarely get more than one bid. Why, why is that?
You know, I, I don't know. I, we send them out to, uh, you know, we do at least three that we can find and we usually get one, um, the first time we had the, um, what was it called? What was it? Do you guys remember when it wasn't AE?
Highland.
Highland.
Do you remember?
Highland. Um, we got, we got two that year, Highland and AE, AE, and apparently Highland was new because AE used to do it. Um, and then they didn't submit a bid. After that first year they had that, Highland didn't submit a bid. So I don't know, um.
Can we contact some other districts to see who they're bidding to?
Yeah, and, yeah. And the one thing they. And the one thing they suggested when I went to this procurement is send out, they have a form that we can send out to say, you know, I'm not going to submit a bid, or, or maybe they can let us know why they're not submitting a bid. Instead of, we just never receive a bid, no. So there's a, a form that we're going to do next year, when we do send out that letter, please submit business or information. And then we'll send the, that letter, it's called a no bid letter, back, at least send us back and let us know what. But it, we're not, the red companies are consolidating, I don't know about milk, but there seems like they have like different areas that they serve.
But you, but you sent out a hard copy, or it was electronic request?
We actually do a letter.
So you sent out a hard copy to several?
We do at least three, and I don't remember who that third one is, there's another one.
So do we have contact information, obviously? So I think in the conversation we had a couple meetings ago, Lindsay, where I would ask that we follow up with a phone call. And to your point, well, are you going to submit a bid, or, I mean.
Give me somebody else in the industry that will, if you won't, so yeah, they'll know.
Because, because I get, I get not spending money on the Des Moines Register, because it probably won't, it, it's, that's probably wasted money. But that doesn't mean that we shouldn't be trying to get more than a bid on things. And I don't know all of the factors, but if we're taking the time to physically send out bids, there must be people out there. A phone call to follow up and ask, well, is there not interest? Do you know of anybody else that would? Because the whole part, purpose of a bidding process.
Yeah, to get a competitive bid.
You only get one, it was kind of a waste, but I think this, I get why we would do it, because we know we're going to be over that. But my fear is just that the number just keeps creeping up. You know what I mean, and then pretty soon it's going to be, well, you know what, now it's 60,000.
But probably should, just for inflation.
I get that over time, I get it over time, if it is due to inflation, but if it's not due, you know, you just don't.
The year before.
No, this is a new one, it's a brand new one.
This is brand new, 40.
I'm curious why they set it to 40, did they give any indication why they put that number? This is only the first reading, we don't have to refer to it tonight.
No, and you know, I don't think 40 was an issue until the procurement, the federal procurement went in. Then the only reason this is an issue is because of the threshold of the dairy procurement.
Okay. Is this the one that we have to wait?
No, this is, we're not.
We're bound to do it geographically.
Oh, no, that second, but that section's brand new, that 40 is brand new.
The, the bids for the food, like that, the food service, that food program, although some of them are bound.
Which revision back here.
Like we have the same thing in a geographic, you know, you're just open to it, whatever.
Yeah, we don't want to get milk from Des Moines.
Got it.
So for the record, this is not a new policy, so everybody that's watching.
2016 is the last.
But it was initially approved in 1991, what we don't know was have these numbers been changed over the course of one, two, three, four, five, six revisions. And that would be good to know, to your point about covering inflation, but not just changing a policy to avoid something, so.
And, you know, we're good with whatever.
I, I, I would move to, or this is the first, first reading, so I'm comfortable with this, but before we get to the second and the last reading, let's find out how long the 40,000, was it two versions ago, or five versions ago?
I don't think we, if we did it in 2000, whenever, I, when I was on the board, we didn't change any of the numbers. So it's at least one version old.
Which take it to 2012, so then it's five years old.
Yeah.
And, you know, I, and I just threw 50 in there because of currently where we're at. You know, if you don't feel comfortable with that, that's, and it's really just because of the dairy procurement thing.
Sure.
Makes sense, so in, whatever's fine, so.
Okay, moving along now, financial reports.
Okay, so I did, I put a narrative here, so as we go through it, this is basically what I wanted to do, is going through the narrative. So with this due reports, the first thing you're going to do is on, the budget is on page three. And so this is, we'll be changing every, you know, the budget is based on where we're at, at October, basically, page three. So the monthly, so. So this is our, basically our budget, which is, we did tweak it from the last time, we, since we got some actual numbers for enrollment, we reduced the budget down, so these, this will basically stay the same, unless we do a budget amendment. This is our line item budget. And so then, the actuals on page one is, will change month to month. And as of, the revenues to date is 3.6, and are 3,060,000. And the monthly revenues, the year to date is 5.2. The monthly expenses are 1.151, and the year to date expenses are 3.3. Now we've, when you look at the year to date and the, we're at a gain of, I'm sorry, my eyes. We're at monthly gain, so as you go through these, just remember that this is comparing to the budget on the other page. And we're only in four months, so as you move across. So on the, the variance page on here, the month view, which you'll look at the green and the red. And what this tells you is the monthly revenues are a little bit below, but, you know, we just collected property taxes. So what this is telling me is, you know, maybe we collected less property taxes than we thought we anticipated. Next month will probably be a little bit more property taxes than we would think, you know, we were going to for budget. Because mainly it's property taxes and state revenues. And so on the expenditure side, you see the green is good, the red is, ooh, what's going on? You know, that, in the business central minute, or the building administration, 1.8's not a big deal. So I dug into the, the plant operation maintenance, this one is like, okay, what story is this telling me on this? The $10,000 of plant operations. So I dug into that, and so basically, it was repairs and maintenance. It was a big month for repairs and maintenance. We had, it was above our, by $13,000 due to heating and cooling repairs. And there was building repairs in there, and building supplies was, so this tells me that that's what was going on in this line item, because it turned red, this is unusual, so it caught, you know, it's red, so it's like, okay, let's dig into it, see what's going on. What's unusual that's happening this month and wasn't in other months. And so, so we're overall, the year to date gain is, we're good at 41. But for the month, we're a little, you know, we're behind, we're, so that's what the conclusion, you know, you, you look at this report, and you look at the green, the red, and then you go from there on telling the story.
These are great reports.
So that's basically, I don't know if you want any more than that. The summary is basically, I'm just drawing your attention to the revenues, the expenditures, where we should be at. And, and then this all ties in, I guess we added Franco backup to the very first page. I wanted to remind, I wanted to let you know, this is beginning fund to equity, so we're not talking about cash here, we're talking about equity. So at the end of the, end of the fiscal year, we use that fund equity to determine our solvency ratio. So this will all tie in, until at the end of the fiscal year, we'll be able to calculate our solvency issue, or issue. It's not going to be an issue.
But you can solve it at month end every time too, right? By just taking that bottom line there?
That's what I, I've asked for that, and they are very, very reluctant.
Okay.
Because they said you need to have a big picture. There's too much of a variance to put that much importance on. Because right when you think you're tracking at, oh, we've got 13.
Yeah.
Two months, three months later, we've got seven.
You see the variance even in that. I did have one question, Gayle, that you don't need to answer tonight, but when you go to the, the allowable, or you go to the budget. So if you, you look at that, the, kind of that blue and yellow, so keep scrolling on down. And you can just. Just wanted, I had one question, that page, so go to the bottom of that page, Gayle. And you see the 16,4, and the 16,394?
Yeah.
I, I couldn't tie those to the budget, but I don't need that answer tonight. But, but I'm just curious as to, if that didn't, the budget number didn't tie exactly, it's really close, so, so it's not a, a big deal.
Oh, yeah.
That was the only question that I, that I had, as I looked at it, is, is I went back to the budget, and they, they fairly close, so not worth splitting hairs over. But I thought, next month, if you want to kind of check that, and make sure that, that there's an explanation, or why that doesn't tie up.
Yeah, on line 32 and 33, I will double check that.
Yeah, yeah.
So that's what, and then the other financial reports I have in, basically gave you a narrative on that. And if there's any questions, you can ask now, or we can wait till later on. I don't know exactly at this point, if, John, how much you want me to go through at this time.
Yeah, if there's any questions, I think, I think that first group really, really gets you to it. But certainly if any board members would like to ask on the rest, I'm more than welcome to.
But thank you for the narrative, that is very helpful.
Yeah, it's a great report, Gayle.
It is.
I, I think it's just a better, a better way of reporting.
You get a lot of information without, without a lot of pages, so that's really nice.
The next item is the consent agenda. Is there any items in the consent agenda any board members would like to discuss?
Oh, let's talk about the audit.
I was just gonna ask about that. I want it.
We really didn't have any comments, that was.
That's great news, right?
And the first audit that, or the first comment they had was, you know, you know you have negative meal accounts, which, you know, that is the buzzword in the, in the news, right?
$1,000, is that like?
Yeah, so why wouldn't they bring that to the audit, you know, comments, so. They had to mention, I think it was a total of, it was three, three families, and one of those was $700. So, and, you know, we know that, we've talked about it, we know, I, we told them what the board's opinion was in that. So, and we've set a policy, so. And this oral one with funeral flowers, this happened October 10th. Which last year, when we were doing, it was past our audit, and this one has already taken care of itself, because we don't allow this to happen. And it was a timing thing that they just happened to pick the one that we allowed, because the year before, they were here after this day. So now, we're not saying that kids cannot purchase flowers, funeral flowers, for their football, you know, team or member or anything. What they have to do is they have to collect, everybody donate a dollar, then they have to go down and purchase it, not charge it. This cannot be ran through the school. That's not the purpose of activity funds. So that's, it's not saying that they can't do it, they just have to do it differently. And this tag comment, it's ironic, because this testing is, you're testing for tag kids, well, not all students are tagged. So you can't use tag spending. But what happened is we overspent our salaries and benefits in the general fund, the tag budget didn't cover all of the salaries and benefits. So we did have expenses to match that, we just, you know, chose to use it elsewhere. So he was good with that, he says, I know what you did, but I have to put it in here. So we just need to, you know, not code that test to tag, because it's not all tag students yet. And then the other one was, they picked out on, when they went, the administration went to the conference down in.
New Orleans.
New Orleans. And what happened is Lindsay, you know, they'd all get together in the evening for a meal, and they're out, allowed $10 per meal, you know, maximum $30 a day.
Cheese sandwiches, buddy.
So what happened is they all got together, and Lindsay put it on his credit card. Well, how, how do you know that the rest of them didn't spend $30 on their meals already? Well, we just know, we know our staff, you know, and, and then we said, you know, this is just, it doesn't happen very often. First of all, our administration doesn't go to these meetings every year. Second of all, it was just a convenience for them to get together, put it on one ticket, you know. But they had to.
They had to find something, right?
Yeah.
And so then, this other thing was a pending, there was no audit, there was no adjustment to the enrollment. That was, it said pending, because we hadn't downloaded the document, well, there was no document to download, so that meant we didn't have an adjustment on our enrollment.
And then the two that they mentioned, they deemed it not to be a conflict.
We have to disclose that.
But I think they did.
Anytime we have, we have to disclose it. So it'll be there every year unless we do not do business with them. So don't take it as if we just have to disclose it.
Yep.
So that's not.
Gayle, is the $10 a meal a state thing, or a Gilbert policy?
Can we set that amount?
Is it 10 bucks, really?
Sometimes we make it for a day, oh.
I know, that's, you know, it's our, it's our, our policy, it's a, it's a local board policy, so.
Oh, you'd like that updated? Policy committee can check that.
We'll take that up.
One time I've used it, but it's frustrating.
Out of state is $40. In-state is 32, I think.
For what?
For meals.
For state employees?
Employees, it's eight, 12, and 20, not to exceed 40, out of state.
Is that what you're saying, a day, or a week?
Breakfast.
A day.
It seems like a little outstate mileage rate, so we don't.
Really?
We'll check on that, on that. It's a huge priority, but.
But it's a good point, you've got to be consistent with the state. Okay, I'll entertain a motion on the consent agenda, please.
Salute.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion? Say aye?
Aye. All right.
All opposed? Stands approved. Calendar. We have, we've talked about Iowa Associate School Board this month, we have a regular December meeting, and next month.
In between that, John, we had talked about Lindsay.
Oh, yeah, let's talk about that.
Lindsay, having a closed board session, where Lindsay gives us sort of a state of, kind of a district, and an update on how this year is going so far, some, some challenges, some goals. And we, I think it was a process that we ended up with at the, in the last full year, we want to continue on. So Lindsay was going to propose some dates for us, at, at the end of November, our post Thanksgiving.
I think we already had tentatively at the, said Monday, that last Monday in November.
So December 11th is the, is the normal school board meeting, so everybody kind of checked their schedule, see if that worked.
Yep.
And then that would be, what day are you shooting for, Gayle, what was that?
27th, last, last Monday.
What, what is this one?
27th, okay, November 27th.
What was that, we're supposed to say, what is this meeting, that extra week?
It's a separate court.
It's a quarterly review with.
And we, and we haven't proposed quarterly, so we're just talking about this one in February.
Yeah.
So school.
Talking about the 27th?
That's, yeah.
Super tent evaluation, post meeting, November 27th.
I'm out of town that whole week.
Yeah, would you want to move, oh, then that's like, oh, we could do it on the 4th of December, if we want to keep it on a Monday?
Concerts? Do you have any concerts?
Yep.
The 4th would work for me.
Any concerts, that would be a, a count put there, on the 4th. Well, that's just, but they are, he'll be there, this is.
They won't be there anyway.
Yeah, it's just.
Oh, that's right, that's right.
Well, that's, no, that's, that's what we have to check.
But are you going to ask when they are having them? I don't, was it the 4th, or was it Tuesday?
Shouldn't be an issue then.
So November 27th is December 4th?
That works for me, does that work for everybody?
That would work for you.
Yeah.
You're in town.
I think I'll, oh, Lindsay, what works good for you? Going to 6 o'clock?
Yeah, that sounds good for everyone.
And on the 11th of December, that's board meeting, I have, it's questionable if I'm here or not, my wife is having surgery on her knee that day, so.
Oh.
I, I think I'll, I think she stays overnight in the hospital, so I'm going to be home with the kids anyway, and I'll be considering that, but. Yes, let's say yes, tentatively.
Otherwise, we could move it two weeks later, go down the 25th.
Only if you dress up.
I'm getting most.
No, no, no. No, no, no.
Any other items? Entertain a motion to adjourn.
Salute.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, stand adjourned. Thank you, everyone. Thank you back row. I'm going to try something before you judge it off.
Is it really, is this necessary?